Welcome to today's city council meeting. Today, Monday, October 28th. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Present.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Present.
District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
District three, Vice Mayor Silvera.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. And please stand for the invocation by Chris Henry from the Hope Tree Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we come before your throne of grace, pleading for your mercy and your forgiveness for the errors that we've committed in our lives, both knowingly and unknowingly. Father, I thank you for those who are here today, representing us in this city, in the departments. Lord, I thank you for our first responders, for our fire department, for our police department, for the protection that you have given to them and shown to them. Lord, I pray and plead for your protection, continued protection in the future days, as they put their lives on the line to protect us. Lord, I thank you for the city council members and our mayor, who have diligently sought the good of our city. Lord, I pray that in this coming election season, which often can bring confusion, Lord, I pray that we look to you as sovereign God, that your will will be done on earth as it is in heaven, and we will accept it as is. Lord bless this meeting, and may wisdom prevail in all these things. We pray this in Jesus' name.
City Council, we have two presentations. The first presentation is the award for Johnny Corrio, and this will be done by Sam. And City Council will go ahead and stand up now, even though Sam is doing the presentation. We'll go up there because after that is a Veterans Day proclamation.
Sir. As usual. Mayor Lopez, City Council, on behalf of Johnny Corillo, known as J.C., I want to thank him for his 25 years of service. Is celebrating 25 years in facility maintenance is a significant achievement. It reflects loyalty, hard work, dedication, resilience, and wealth of experience. Whether it is a relationship built, challenges faced, or successes celebrated, this is a milestone. Milestone deserves recognition. Congratulations, J.C.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything? Any words? Hard to believe it's been 25 years, half my life. Made a lot of friends in those years. It's an honor. Thank you.
For the Veterans Proclamation, Councilmember Casey.
Whereas the willingness of Americans veterans to serve our country have earned them our lasting gratitude. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the individuals who are serving or have served in the armed forces are vital in maintaining our freedom and our way of life. And whereas our nation's annual Veterans Day observance, we celebrate and honor the patriots who have fought to protect the democracy ideas that are the foundation of our country. Whereas when the Armistice ended World War I, it was signed on November the 11th, more than 4.7 million Americans put down their arms and turned to work of strengthening our nation. The end of that first global conflict was initially commemorated as the Armistice Day. Whereas in 1954, Congress renamed that day as Veterans Day to recognize all those who have served in our armed forces. And whereas the theme for Veterans Day 2024 is "A Legend of Loyalty and Service", highlighting the dedication to honor those who have made personal sacrifices in their commitment to serve our country. Now, therefore, be it resolved, on behalf of our mayor, Javier Lopez, the City of Series, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Brett Silvera, Councilmembers Rosalind Vera and Daniel Martinez, and myself, James Casey, do hereby call upon all citizens to commend Americans veterans and observe Monday, November the 11th, 2024 as Veterans Day. This proclamation is given to the VFW of Series and the American Legion on this day, the 28th day of October, 2024.
Kate Samiego, Commander of the American Legion Post 491, Department of California. I'd like to thank the mayor, the vice mayor, the city council, leaders of our community, our veterans who are here also, and our citizens of our community. We appreciate this proclamation, and it's an honor to receive it every year. Thank you.
John Warren, I'm a citizen of the City of Series, veteran, member of the VFW post 10293. Tonight, our post commander was not able to be here, and as a quartermaster of the post, he asked me to come and accept this proclamation. But I did want to take a moment to reflect on the veterans that have passed and the veterans that are going to come forward in the future. My wife and I, on Friday night, had an occasion to be at the Gallow Center, or Wayne Newton's performance. And sitting in a row right next to me was a gentleman that was from the great generation. He was on Midway Island when the Japanese attacked there during World War II, and he was there at the conclusion of the war in August of 1945. Now, that gentleman is almost 100 years old, if not older. And those people need to be honored as we find them in the community. I want to thank the citizens, City Series Council, for this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Citizens Communications. The City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings. Adopt the rules allowing no more than five minutes. Resolution number 2007-106, for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of City Council and not posted on the agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda, unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item, subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the City Council must adhere to the rules of decorum. Rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber doors. We will begin with our yellow cards. And we have Justin, Assemblymember Juan Alanis's office. Welcome.
Well, good evening, Series City Council and staff, as well as the residents of Series. Justin Parkus, representing the Office of Assemblyman Juan Alanis. I don't have too much to update on. We haven't had any significant changes in our status of legislation. Still hold a strong record among our colleagues in terms of effectiveness up in the legislature. I actually come today just to make the staff, the council, and residents aware that we are starting to build our legislative package for the 2025 session. So if there's anyone, whether you're in the audience here today, up on the dais here, and you see a need, not just in terms of legislation, but in the City of Series that needs to be addressed at the state or your local legislator could come and help, whether that park, a regulatory issue, whether that's a need of finances, we want to do our best to represent you and be here for you. So we're just here making that ask. If you have any questions, I'll leave a stack of my cards on the back there. A few of your council members here do have my contact information already, and I'll be sure to share that with you all if you need it. So please reach out to us and let us know how we can be an effective legislator for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Is there any members of the public that would like to come up and make a comment? Now is the time. And please state your name.
Yes, my name is Pastor Jose Magaña, and I live here in Series. And I got a letter from the City of Series, and I thought at first it was for some trailers that I have in front of my house. I have a ministry called Ministerio Maná El Pande Vida. I'm responsible to feed over 3,700 people, I mean, 3,700 people a week. I also help people that are fighting addiction. I find places for them so they can get help and also help out the homeless. So I got the letter, and I told my wife, oh, they're going to stop us from bringing the trucks or doing, you know, getting the food. And it wasn't for that. It was for my carport that I have in front, on the side of my house. I don't have it in front of the house. And they gave me a couple of days to take it off. I'm here. These guys, we all have nice carports. We're asking for an amendment or to do something so we can still have our nice... I paid $11,000 for the carport. For a ministry, that's a lot of money, and we're just asking for an amendment for those carports.
Well, have one another time. Thank you. We'll make sure the staff gets back to you. Next person.
I reside at 2204 Lewis Avenue. And I understand the need for this type of... This type of, I can't think of the word right now, kind of gun shy. But anyway, as far as amending it, I'd be willing to pay an annual fee that'd be revenue generated for the city, if that's a possibility, something to look into so that I can keep the carport. So... I also have somebody at home with a disability, wheelchair-bound, and I use that to load and unload the wheelchair. And it's pretty difficult when it's storming out to make sure that she's safe. So I'm hoping that the City Council will take all this into consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Sir, can you please state your name for the record?
It was Luis. What was your last name, sir? Martinez? Martinez, Luis Martinez. Hey, we're just getting your information. Is there anybody else?
Hello, my name is Derek Cowell, and my parents live on the corner of Lunar and Fowler. And this pertains to them as well. I was just hoping that if... If it's possible to have a change of ordinance with the code, we would like to recommend that. From what I understand, with the, you know, the progressive movement in the early 1900s, codes were written for safety, sanitation. They had very practical applications for the good of the people that were living on that property. And so any ordinances that don't abide by that criteria and don't seem to be necessary, we'd like to ask if you would consider reconsidering. Thank you.
Thank you. What was your name again, sir?
Derek Cowell.
Okay. Thank you, Derek. You got that information?
Liliana Gonzalez is here, but she doesn't speak English. So she is one of, also that has the letter that she got to for the carport.
Yeah, we want to get her information. Would she like to speak?
I agree with everybody, and I want to keep my porch on my sidewalk.
Thank you very much. We'll make sure that we grab her information, please.
My name is Janet C. I live on Joy Avenue here in Series. I also have one of the very nice carports, and would also like to request from the City Council a change of the ordinance so we can keep these nice carports. The weather's not getting any cooler. It's 110, it's 100, it's well over 100. We had almost 50 days of over 100 degrees. I don't think this is too much to ask. These are not tattered carports. These are very well-constructed carports. And it's my understanding that one of the people in this room on the City Council has one. I'd really like for you to recommend a change of that ordinance so that we could keep our nice carports. Like I say, they're not tacky. They're very well-done, very well-made. And it was a tremendous amount of money we spent on getting them. And I personally don't have the money to take it down and move it anywhere. It just seems absolutely crazy that I can't keep the carport. There's no visibility issue. There's nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Is there anybody else?
Hello, everyone. My name is Ed Cowell. My son was just up here talking about my residence. I have a carport here, and I'm in support with these people. We paid a lot of money for it. We had, I live on a corner where there's a lot of traffic, and I've had a lot of things stolen from time to time. And so since we put this up, it's kind of slowed everything down. I'm here in support of that. I'd like to work with the city to try to change the ordinance somehow so we can keep some of it. If we have to make adjustments to meet these new criterias, we will do that. I just think it's very important that Series is not a real big city. And as you go around the city, there's a lot of people that have these, and they put them up to protect their property, protect the investments that they have in certain things that they have bought. And so that's what we're here for tonight, is just to get it started, get something going, so that we can come to an agreement where we're not breaking the law by doing these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed, for the recommendation. Is there anybody else?
Name's Gene Igley for Series. I'd like to thank Jim Casey for his presentation for Veterans Day. How do you top that for a local city? Well-constructed, and he got to the point. And the gentleman from the American Legion that showed up, and of course, Dave and John. And I've said this several times in the past. I hope people that are listening, people behind me, take the time out, and whether it's their neighbors or someone they see in a store, maybe with some kind of insignia on, take the time, stop and say, you can say thank you or whatever you want to as far as their recognition for their service and stuff. And as I've said again before, none of us would be here without those people before us. The Revolutionary War, the Civil War, all the wars in between. And those people that took that time to sacrifice their lives, their bodies, and their souls and minds to give us what we got today. And on the local level, I hope that just before Veterans Day, I know there's a lot of police officers that work for the City of Series that are veterans, people with the different departments. Just before Veterans Day, I hope you take the time, the people that you do know that are veterans working for the city. If you have to have them stand in line, shake their hands, pat them on the back if you want to or you can, and just let them know that you're with them and you appreciate what they did. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm going to close for me with this. So City Councilman, if you guys ever need any help with any homeless in a shelter, she has my card. Or people who are having trouble with drugs, she has my card. Or if they need any groceries, I give out $300 worth of groceries for every family once a week. We're doing about 3,700, 3,700 people every week. So if she has all my information, you know anybody, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council members. John Warren, I live here in the Series, as you're aware of. And tonight, I wanted to speak to a couple of things that I have mentioned before in the past. One of them concerns this audio system here. The fact that it doesn't work as well as it should. We can sit here in the audience and not understand the person that's speaking here at the podium. As an example, I want to throw out what happened at the most recent forum for the mayor candidates running for mayor in the Series and for Council District Three, when the city... Oh, come on, John. Chamber of Commerce put on the forum. They used the system that was here, and it didn't work very well. They had constant problems with feedback. I believe the Zoom portion didn't work very well, and there was quite a little fiasco. And the last two Planning Commission meetings have also been the same way, where the audio visual hasn't worked. In one case, one of the members was away and tried to do the Zoom thing and be present with the Planning Commission so he could be involved with the meeting. And the system didn't work at all. I mean, he was not able to participate. There were enough commissioners there to carry on the meeting. But it all has to do with how the system doesn't work sometimes, and maybe once in a while, it does. When Commissioner Ketchel on the Planning Commission speaks, most of the time, you can't hear him, and he's sitting in the very same spot that Mr. Silvera is up there. And for some reason, his positioning, the way the microphone works, or whatever... And he kind of got mad at me one evening a little bit because I asked him to speak up when he was making a motion. We couldn't understand what he said. And he got really close, and he spoke very loud, and then it worked. But for just regular conversation, the system didn't work. Also, at the most recent meeting they had, just the other day, the meeting was 17 minutes late and getting started, which is not an uncomfortable thing. But it was because the PA system didn't work, and the Zoom system didn't work. And so I know a lot of money has been spent on this system, and you keep going back, I think, to the same contractor, and it's still not working. Even the other evening at the Planning Commission meeting, there was supposed to be an ITech person or somebody here from the city that was familiar with the system, and he could not make it work. So we need to fix this so the citizens of this community can hear what's going on. And I think some of the leftover ARPA money, which there's probably between $500,000 and maybe a million dollars of leftover ARPA money out there, should be used for this and the city's water tower, and quite possibly for the banner committee. In the next two years, there's probably going to be maybe six or seven or eight or 10 banners added to the ones that we have now currently in the city. And this is a very, very close project to some of us veterans that were on the committee and worked with the City Council, you folks here, to get this up and running. And so $100,000, no, $1,000 would buy six banners over the next two years. So it's not a large sum, and I would hope that you would consider when you finally figure out how much money is left, which has to be earmarked and spoken for by the end of this year, as we all know. And there's nothing on the agenda tonight. And so there's two meetings in November, and the first meeting in December, December 9th, would be the last one of the year. So time is running out to figure out how much money is there and how to spend it. So consider the water tower and the banners and the audio system in this building. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Anybody else? Seeing none? Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
I believe you said you had one email.
We did receive one email from Tony Cavagion. States, please use this for comment and to be ready at the next City Council meeting. He says, my name is Tony Cavagion, and I have a concern about the no fishing at the River Bluff lower terrace. For nearly 25 years, families and individuals have been fishing the pond located there. Then in the last year, the policy has changed. Why? I haven't, I've been told there's a concern about a pond liner. However, in 25 years, there has been no reported issues of fishermen disrupting any pond liner, according to the City Works Department personnel he talked to. If there is a liner, it's a moot point. The liner is webbed. It does not hold water in place. It may have been part of the design and soil placement process 25 years ago, but has no bearing on fishing today after so long. Besides, when they excavated the pond for the remodeling of that area, that liner would have been torn away. The pond was not drained, and there was no new liner put in. What I'd like to see instead of no fishing signs would be catch and release only. Do not consume anything from this pond signs. This way, you're not making it a crime for grandfathers, fathers, sons, and daughters to do what we've done for nearly 25 years. I'm pleading to the council to restore the right of families to enjoy a day of fishing and not get an infraction ticket or fine for doing it. You'd hope a family-friendly administration would facilitate getting kids away from their PlayStations and out into nature with mom, dad, and grandparents. There has been no problem for 25 years in doing that. Let's continue letting people enjoy the fishing pond.
Thank you very much. Citizens communication is now closed. Is there any conflict of interest from the City Council? Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature. It will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be acted upon and will be accepted and enacted upon by a roll call vote. Is there anyone in the council that would like to consent item pulled for further discussion? Is there any members of the public? Seeing no hands on Zoom? Bring this item back to the council.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Solera?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to council referrals. Council members request to have an agenda item placed on the future agenda soon to Chapter Two City Council meetings, J eight City Council referrals. Item number six, LED stop signs near schools. This item was referred by me and I'll start off by my request. I'm interested in getting a report that would allow us to see what it would look like to have LED stop signs near our schools. And that would obviously require a report from staff. Now open this up for the public. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to make a comment on this item? See, actually?
And I didn't receive the, I didn't look at the staff report on the explanation on this. You're talking about the?
There's no staff report yet. It's more first process referral.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're talking about the signs that have the LED lights around them?
Stop signs, yes.
Yeah, they're kind of limited in Series. There's, let's see, one, two, I think there's three or four around my area and the good people, they know what to do. And the rest of them just continue to do what they're doing. It's a good idea to put those out there to try to suppress some of their bad habits. You know, I don't know how costly they are. I'm not against putting them up. But again, you know, when the powers be and the money be, yeah, the money be, maybe they'll drop some money for law enforcement so we can have that traffic issue. We need to patrol those schools when they're active and stuff because a lot of people do crazy stuff, even when the kids are there too. Luckily, I haven't heard of any injuries from students, but you know, some of these schools have quite a few people crossing the crosswalks and by those particular signs you're talking about with the LED lights. Maybe at night they look at them because it's more apparent than the daytime. That'd be nice to hear what some of these views on that, like from Chief Perry, what he thinks about those things. If they're, you know, I wouldn't say a waste of money, but if they're not really warranted at this time, they could put that, whatever they cost into some other cause that might be more appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else?
My name is Angela Cowell and I definitely believe that we should have some signs. I don't know if you are actually talking about putting extra stop signs. I know that we live on Hale Aloha, where it ends at Central, which is a house away. And Caswell's right there. Evans, how Evans comes into, into Central and how Hale Aloha comes into Central. That place is like a speed raceway for everybody. And the safety of our children, there's so many that cross Central to have a light there. And to be able, so that people can come out of Evans onto Central, it's a nightmare. You can't see down from the houses, you can't see because we have the dentist's office and it's so far back. You can't, you have to kind of guess. So if we had stop signs at Caswell. Also, my son, Tins Beaver, and we always have to take, we just take a right or to go down to Grayson to turn around. It's like a kind of a mess of trying to leave that school. And I know that's almost county, it's like out there so far. But if there was a stop sign right there on Central again, right after CV and then right at, you know, right at, as you're going out of the school. There's been times where I saw a truck, unfortunately, because someone was making the illegal U-turn to go left. Like it was a, like a trash truck and a garbage truck. And he slammed on his brakes and it was just inches from hitting someone. And so the safety of our children and the parents who don't always make the wisest decisions on making the illegal U-turn there, we need to have those stop signs. I think it would be a great idea to get the people to notice them better. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else know yours? Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
I'll bring this item back to the city council for any comments. And I have Mr. Martidis.
No, Mr. Mayor, mine was to make a recommendation for a referral.
Okay, Rose Linda, what about you?
Yes, I do have a comment, Mayor. Thank you. Just going back, I know you had mentioned that you had not heard of experiences. My daughter actually went to Blaker, Kenzer, and we live on Hackett. When she was crossing the street at Blaker and Hackett, which now does have a flashing light, a decade ago it did not. The car did not see the children in the crosswalk and did not see the stop sign and ran through the stop sign. It actually hit my daughter's friend and clipped the rear part of my daughter. And an ambulance had to come pick up her friend and my daughter was able to go back to school though because it just clipped her. Now, this happened to me over a decade ago to my family. My daughter and her friend were fine, but ultimately this was a situation that happened right on Blaker and Kenzer as they were walking to Blaker, Kenzer Junior High. This is a situation that all the students, even a decade later, are having to face every single day at our schools. The sunlight face comes in from the east and is really hard to see in the mornings. I see it myself headed to the freeway from where I live. It's also the same issue when I return home and the sun's now coming in from the other direction and it can be difficult. So not just making it difficult to see, but I think the importance of our children, including my own, who are now adults and have children of their own. I think it is important that we try to take the steps, if financially feasible, or if there's grants available, again, I'm going to leave that to the city staff to look into, to make sure our schools and the routes to school are safe so that we know other parent is having to address the same issue that I had to face a decade ago while my child was walking to Blaker, Kenzer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I think this has been a hot vetting issue for a long time and the Safe Routes to School Grant was, some of it is for things like this. So while our staff is doing a staff report on this, I think we need to bring in the school district as well because there may be some funds available through that grant or some others.
Great idea. Thank you, everybody. Martidis, you said, you had a motion. This is just consensus, I'm sorry.
Mayor, so we do need, we do need consensus to actually agendize this with staff report and all the information.
Comes up. You have consensus. Moving on to reports.
Mr. Mayor, I actually had two referrals.
Oh, you have, oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I jumped ahead thinking that we were going to make a referral, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first referral I wanted to make is I was hoping we can have staff bring a report on our dog park. I've visited recently and Mr. Pratt is right, it is mowed very short, the drainage isn't proper. The mud is, is pretty bad. Everyone leaves there, their dogs are coated in black. After hearing that and speaking with citizens at the dog park, I would like to see if maybe we can have a staff report back on frequency of mowing or what we can do drainage wise to get that mud under control. And so I don't know if you want to bring that one to the public and then I can do my second.
So procedurally, this is, this is a new referral. It's just the stated, we'll put it on for the?
Consensus for that?
For the next meeting.
Okay. And then my second would be, since I'm not the owner of a carport, I thought maybe I would put the the referral out to have the carport ordinance brought back and have that be something we can revisit and see if there's anything we can do to help these people that came here this evening.
Consensus?
Mayor, procedurally, so this, this will be added for the next agenda and we'll, we'll?
Just getting too excited around here, but okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll put those two items on the next agenda. Okay, thank you very much. Now we can move on to reports. I have no reports and we'll go ahead and start off with Mr. Casey. You have any reports?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to report that our commander of our VFW unit wasn't here tonight to accept the proclamation. But he's going to be recognized by our Board of Supervisors on Election Day. So try and take the time, council people, and I know it's an important day for some of us. But try and take the time to make it to the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors meeting. Commander Morales will be recognized as a veteran of Stanislaus County for the year. And my, my next is not really a report, but a question that was asked to me and I didn't have an answer. You know, we have all the mobile vendor food places. And somebody buys a taco at Taco Bell, they pay sales tax. They buy a taco at the place on, anyone, well, I can't speak for all of them. But at least five different places, they don't pay a sales tax. And they want to know why and I really couldn't give them an answer. So that's just, that's kind of a report and kind of a question to be followed up on, I hope by staff. You know, we have like a whole bunch. And each one of them, if they're not paying sales tax for the processed food, which they're supposed to be, all of them combined might equal what the same amount of sales that Taco Bell does in a day. I'm not sure. I, I hope that, again, that was, it was a question and that's why I'm reporting it. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, Rose Linda Vera?
Thank you, Mayor. So just kind of do a recap. This week we had the opening of the Cupcake Boutique on Mitchell and Service Road. We also have the groundbreaking for the Grubhub, which will include 17, up to 17 food vendors, which they already have a variety of vendors already slated there. We also was able to attend the Jukara Movement, which is a walk by the Sikh community to engage the community and highlight the Sikh community and bring awareness. And they walk every year up to the Capitol from the Bakersfield area. In regards to housing, we also had the press conference and some information regarding Tuscany Village. I'm looking forward to actually seeing some housing as that's been an eyesore on our side of town, out on the west side of Series. So of those homes, approximately 20 of them will be considered affordable housing. The other ones will be market rate. So hopefully that'll bring homes to at least 40 members of the community that reside here, at least in the Stanislaus County. So I look forward to bringing housing to our community. And then I'm sure, I'm not going to take away the thunder from everyone because I'm sure they're going to bring up the crosstown and the homecoming game this Friday. I hope everyone can join out and support our youth when it comes to youth activities. Tickets for the public go on sale Wednesday for $11 an adult. They do expect to sell out early, so if you plan on going, please get your ticket early. And then I'll let the other two gentlemen fight over whether Central Valley or Series is going to win. At four kids go to Central Valley, one of them did play football, I also had a nephew who was a triathlete. And I look forward to hopefully seeing the Hawks win, but I'm going to leave it to the other two next to me.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank the rec staff for the amazing job they did with the trunk or treat. Couple Saturdays ago was, once again, it was a crazy, wonderful event with a ton of people, well attended by people from all over the region. And also, like Rose Linda said, thank you for all the city staff that's been involved with that and also the crosstown showdown. We had closed the streets and there were people out there working overtime and everybody was in a good mood. Because obviously the Series High School Bulldogs will come out on top on Friday. And this guy right here, next meeting, next meeting will be wearing a Series Bulldog shirt. Thank you.
Not going to necessarily respond to that, but what I will say is I want to give a shout out to my freshman team. They are nine and O. So congratulations to them, to the Ravelry High School. I'll bring the Kleenex, by the way, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also too wanted to just touch on the crosstown Ravelry Parade, thank the school district for what they did. Hopefully, as that event continues to grow, they can continue to include more sports, more athletes and get that to be more of a larger scale parade. But I also wanted to thank the school board for what they did. And apologized if any of you were there, you would have seen a little two-year-old running around. That was probably mine, getting into everything. But thank you and good luck, Series. I hope the freshman team wins on Halloween night and I hope varsity brings it home on the following evening.
Right on. Thank you very much. City Attorney?
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Any of our department heads?
Want to invite everyone out. November 10th will be our first music fest held at River Bluff, November 10th. Gates open at 12. Event will run from 1 to 6. We have close to 25 food vendors that are registered already. Hopefully I can see everyone out there.
Thank you. And our county supervisor is not online? Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. We will now adjourn this meeting and go to closed session for conference regarding the Public Employee Performance Evaluation. For city manager and city attorney positions, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak regarding this closed session items? Seeing none. After the closed session item, I will return to report out. Everybody have a wonderful week and God bless.
Welcome back everyone, there is nothing to report.